Good evening, everyone. It's Monday, April eighth, two thousand and twenty four, and I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order. We'd like to begin by inviting Minister Andrew Itzen from Madison Church of Christ to come forward for the invocation.
Let's pray. Dear God, we thank you so much for the blessing of prayer. We know that when we come before you, you hear us, and we know that as we come before you, you love us. Thank you so much for sending Jesus Christ so we can have an opportunity to offer this prayer. Lord, as we come before you, first, we want to thank you so much for our awesome community. We thank you for the city of Madison. We thank you so much for all those that serve in it. Lord, we ask a special blessing on all of our first responders. We thank you so much for all of our teachers in our community, and we thank you so much for all of our families that make this community what it is. And, Lord, we lift them all up to you. We pray for their protection. We pray for their wisdom and their endurance for everything that comes their way. Lord, we also thank you so much for the people that are in this room tonight. We thank you for their love for our city. Lord, bless them and bless their families and all that they do. Lord, we also thank you so much for our city officials, the ones that are here tonight and the ones that can't be here. We know that in any way of service comes sacrifice, and so we thank you for the sacrifice that they make. So we pray a blessing on them and their families. Lord, we ask your guiding hand on tonight, that through this time together, that we will love you, love others, and do what you want us to do, which is to show a hand of compassion to those that are around us. Lord, help us to reflect your goodness, and thank you for loving us, and help us to give that love to others. In Christ, then we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge.
(Inaudible). (Inaudible). One nation under God, indivisible, with its repaid interest as it crawls.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Finley, Councilmember Robleski, here. Councilmember Spears, Councilmember Powell.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Council President Bartlett.
Here.
Councilmember Denzine.
Yes.
Councilmember Seaford.
Here.
And I should mention that Mayor Finley and Councilmember Spears are in D.C., representing the city of Madison on the chamber trip, so that's why they're not in attendance this evening. Are there any amendments to the agenda, Mr. Coe?
There are no amendments.
Great. Next, we have approval of minutes number two thousand and twenty four dash zero six dash R G.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Ready for vote.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
The motion passes. Next, minutes number two thousand and twenty four dash zero three dash W S.
Motion approved. Second.
Okay, motion second. Motion by Powell. Second by Shaw. Any discussion? Ready for vote.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears. Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Okay, next, we have presentations and awards, and I'm going to begin with a proclamation by the mayor, designating the month of April as Fair Housing Month, and we have some representatives here from H.A.R., so please come forward. Can turn that around? Okay, I don't usually get to do this. Usually, this is Mayor Finley's honor, but because he's out of town, it is my privilege to get to present the proclamation from Mayor Finley. Whereas, April eleventh, two thousand and twenty four marks the fifty-sixth anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, Title Eight of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, as amended, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, religion, sex, familial status, handicap, and national origin, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all. Whereas, the Huntsville Area Association of Realtors is committed to highlighting the Fair Housing Act by continuing to address discrimination in our community, to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities, and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help assure everyone of their right to fair housing. And whereas the city of Madison has adopted the Fair Housing Act, Title Eight of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, which prohibits discriminations in housing, whereas fair housing is a positive community good and economic stability, community health, and human relations in all communities are improved by diversity and integration. Therefore, Paul Finley, Mayor of the city of Madison, does hereby proclaim the month of April, two thousand and twenty four, as Fair Housing Month. And you can say something, too, if you would like. Would you like to say something, please?
Thank you, President Bartlett, the City Council, and everyone behind the scenes who work to support fair housing, not only during the month of April, but all year round. Realtors stand with our elected officials to defend the Fair Housing Act each and every day. At Huntsville Association of Realtors, we insist on every licensed realtor go over and beyond basic standards of defending homeownership, private homeowner rights. Every member at H.A.R., regardless of what company they work for, abides by a strict code of ethics and goes through implicit bias training and orientation. That's our commitment to fair housing at H.A.R., and we gratefully, we're grateful to all our leaders for reflecting that same strong commitment year round and year out. Thank you so much, President Bartlett.
Thank you, Regina and Sean, both for being here and representing H.A.R. I know I've participated in a number of your webinars and discussing the importance of fair housing, so we appreciate what you do. My next presentation is in honor of National Volunteer Month, and I think we have some representatives from Madison Visionary Partners, if you would like to come forward. And in this proclamation from the mayor, whereas volunteers can connect with local community service opportunities through hundreds of community service organizations, and whereas individuals and communities are at the center of social change, discovering their power to make a difference, and whereas during this month, all over the nation, service projects will be performed, and volunteers recognize for their commitment to service, Paul Finley hereby declares the month of April. And whereas individuals and communities are at the center of social change, discovering their power to make a difference, and whereas during this month, all over the nation, service projects will be performed, and volunteers recognize. With us today, and I would like to recognize them, Community Volunteer of the Year Sandy Wiesner, please come up. Sandy is a founder of the Madison City Community Orchestra. Philanthropic Business Person of the Year winner Alice Lesman, she's the CEO of Signal Inc. Philanthropic Business Person of the Year finalist Christie Clark. And we also have with us tonight our Madison Visionary of the Year, which is our highest community honor, and that's Mr. John Rankin. Well, congratulations to all of the volunteers who were recognized at the M V P luncheon. Next, we have the library operations update by the Madison Friends of the Library.
I don't think they're here tonight.
Oh, okay, all right, then maybe we've got the, we can reschedule them for another night. Next, we have public comments. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. If you've turned in a comment card or requested to comment, you will get to go first. When you approach the desk, please state your name and the district in Madison in which you reside. Oh, and you'll have to turn the microphone around, because I forgot to do that when I was down there earlier. We're going to begin with Rachel Homelak.
And I missed, what's your last name? H O M E L A C K? Okay, thank you.
The printout in front of you comes from. We need you to state your district that you live in in Madison.
District four.
Okay, thank you. The printout in front of you comes from the children's book, Let's Talk About It, and to be found at the Huntsville Madison County Public Library. I conveniently printed the images on both sides, so no need to try to turn it over, so you don't have to look at it. You need to look at it. I cannot describe what you are looking at or read from the book itself, because you will have me removed for obscenities and the livestream censored. If I cannot read from this book or show images here in front of adults, then why is this in the children's section of our library? Let's talk about book bans real quick, something that's literally not happening. Let me make this very clear. Keeping sexually explicit and its obscene books and material from children is not a book ban. Groups like Read Freely Alabama are gross, because they fight so hard to have materials like the ones in front of you in the hands of children. They also think that children should be exposed to disgusting sexually obscene materials, because it could, quote, "help them understand if they're being sexually assaulted." This is the most absurd excuse I've ever heard, to defending minors being exposed to what you have in your hand right now. First off, a child realizing that he or she has been sexually abused because they read a sexually explicit book is just not happening. Anyone with an ounce of common sense realizes that you don't put fire out with fire, and any person who has been sexually abused as a child will tell you that they knew that sexual abuse was wrong from the beginning, and it was, they innately rejected it. Now, are there helpful materials on sexual abuse out there? Yes, of course. But the materials that moms like me want out of the children's section of the library do not accomplish this. Do better, and don't allow these loud and obnoxious groups lie to you about things that are literally not happening. The sexualization of children and books like Let's Talk About It desensitizes them, making them easier targets for pedophiles. Do you want to help this effort to normalize pedophilia? Because that's exactly what's going to happen if we allow these types of books to remain on the shelf. Did you know that suicide is the second leading cause of death among our youth in the U.S., according to the CDC? The suicide rate has increased more than fifty percent in two decades, and it continues to rise. Why? What happened in the past twenty years? Well, the rise of the LGBTQ movement and forcing children to be exposed to sexual content in the name of social justice is what happened. So when groups like Read Freely Alabama gaslight you and say that if you don't celebrate and worship their degenerate lifestyle, people are going to die, you present them with actual facts. You tell them that about each of these suicides of these children that have occurred, because they keep forcing children to deal with topics that they just cannot mentally handle. It's sick. It's vital. Do the right thing. Protect the children now. Please. Thank you, Ms. Homelak. Next, we have Carissa Callan.
Hi, my name is Carissa Callan, and I do not live in Madison, but I have been a resident of Madison County most of my life, and I grew up going to the library, Bookmobiles, New Market is where I grew up. In fact, I love the library so much that I got a master's in library and information science degree. My first job was at the downtown main branch, and I've used that library degree over the years, even as I've homeschooled to help my kids pick out books. I'm here to talk to you today about the change in books. What you see in the libraries today are books that were not out ten years ago. Sorry, I don't have copies for you up close. This is a picture book. This is for children ages three, four, and five that you go pick up out of a bin. This is about a girl going with her grandmother to a Japanese bathhouse. Here in Madison County, we don't, we don't bathe naked with our moms or grandmothers at this age, and so I can only imagine the questions that a kid would have pulling this book off of your Madison branch library. So there's sexually explicit stuff for the young ones, the juveniles, which is ages eight to twelve, and then also the young adult, which you have there. Young adult is thirteen and up. So imagine a thirteen, fourteen, fifteen-year-old looking at those images that you have. That is not okay. That is not okay, and that is in the Huntsville Madison County Public Library. I want to give an example of a comparison. Let's say that you want to have a family movie night, downtown Madison. Are you going to pick an R-rated movie that has sex, more sex, conversations about sex, nudity, masturbation, vulgar language, maybe Deadpool? All right, I didn't see it, but I read the review. It has all those things. Is that the movie that you're going to pick for a family movie night? Probably not. You're probably going to pick a G or PG movie. All right, and then everybody can come. All families can come, no matter what their gender, their identity, their family values, their diversity. They can all come and enjoy that movie, and then if they want to go home and show their eight-year-old Deadpool, they can. So what I'm asking for is for a library, children's department, young adult department, that can be safe for kids of all ages and backgrounds and families to come and explore. And then if their families want to introduce them to masturbation at age eight, the families can do that on their own, but not with our taxpayer money. So I want you to show compassion, like the pastor prayed earlier, for the children that are in your Madison City Library or part of the Huntsville Madison, greater Huntsville Library network. Please talk to the library board about a collection development policy that will keep children safe in the libraries. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callan. Next is Jocelyn Grower.
Good evening, everyone. Jocelyn Grower, District Four. I'm here to urge each and every council member, and even the one that's not here today, to explain why they voted for the next appointed school board member. It's important for transparency and accountability for the citizens of Madison. What are you looking for in a future school board member? What are your priorities? It is important that the member have children, is it important that they have children currently in the school system? The next round of volunteers need to know what qualities matter, and if they would be a good fit in the future. It's important to not waste the time and energy of any volunteer. It is quite a bit of time preparing and also interviewing in front of everyone. It's also important for voters in the future to know how their council member made their decisions and what mattered to them regarding this appointment. And I was here also, I was interested to hear the appreciation for librarians. I have two public school teacher parents. I grew up in a library, and I don't know what is going on with the other people here speaking. I mean, if they have a complaint, they can put it into the library. They have, there is a process in place. It does work. I wasn't planning on speaking to this at night, tonight at all, but that was very upsetting to hear from both of those two speakers. There's nothing more important than public access to books and information for all ages of children and adults, no matter how much money you have, no matter if your parents have a car or not. I mean, it was important to me, and I want that for the next generation. Parents can do just that. They can parent. They can walk into a library. They can see which books their children pick up. As I said, there is a complaint process that these parents can go through, and they need to do that instead of bringing the whole community into it. Thank you tonight for being here, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Grower. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward.
Margie Daly, District Six. Tonight, we honored H.A.R. and M V P, both advocates of tyranny. H.A.R. sent out the text to make communist government while M V P through the S B A-handed elected official COVID funds while small businesses closed. Both advocated tyranny for Madison City. H. on the Finance Committee says a donation of five hundred thousand from the county commission. Does the M V P get the nine point six percent in their pocket on this one, too? Resolution two thousand and twenty four, one oh six R, Rice and Rice. Now, this guy just got millions of dollars in commission from the hundred and fifty million dollar loan bond or whatever it was you got. Now, we're going to give him annual contract, too. Oh ninety-five resolution. The realtor here, we're going to pay six percent when the going rate is two percent. I don't understand. One oh one, we're again using COVID funds for entertainment, five million plus the renovation of the public safety annex, or maybe some pickleball coaches and a few courts. Oh eight oh, the HEMZ agreement to allow non-advanced life support abulances. What? They're not supporting life, the abulances? The pickleball, which I mentioned already, and then we have some deductible that we're getting back. I don't know. Last council meeting, we did some kind of insurance fraud. It was dated, yet it was decades old, and yet it was dated for two thousand and twenty-three, so I'm really confused. Are we now into insurance fraud, too? Then we have oh sixty-five, a change order to a ten-year contract. How is this even acceptable, that you guys sitting here that may not be here in two thousand and twenty-five can give out a ten-year contract? Then we have oh ninety-nine. We're going to lease sixty Panasonic tough laptops for three hundred and forty-two thousand plus dollars. That's fifty-seven hundred each. So, and it says it's a lease. We're not even buying them, and there's two, in number thirteen quotes, it's a lease, and number thirty-one says no software, no software updates are included with this. Then the Shanty Shacks. We're supposed to be able to walk through here. Karen told us we were going to be able to carry mowers through there, and now they got a big gated, gated community now, so we, the public can't even walk through there? When we gave up all land, we now can't walk through there? Is that the case? Is that why there's a big key cut out on the two gates?
Thank you, Ms. Daly. Your time is up. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward.
Senator Coe, Ashley State, District Five, Council President. Just wanted to speak to you tonight about resolution number two thousand and twenty-four, one oh six R, authorizing a contract with Rice Advisory LLC for fiscal and financial advisory services. Why are we renewing a contract with Rice Advisory? Would that be because we're going to take out more bonds for the stadium? This contract lists fees, number seven. The following is the fee schedule proposed by Rice Advisory. All fees are negotiable, so I hope we can negotiate on this. A per-transaction fee with respect to the issuance of each series of bonds, notes, or other debt of the city or its agencies in excess of one million in par amount, the fees to Rice Advisory will be determined on a cost-for-one-thousand basis, with no fee payable until and unless the transaction is closed, as shown below. Amounts up to ten million, two dollars per one thousand, with a minimum of twenty thousand. Amounts over ten million, up to twenty million, a dollar ninety per one thousand, for the amount above ten million plus amount due pursuant to above. Amounts over twenty million, up to thirty million, a dollar eighty per one thousand. Amounts over thirty million, a dollar seventy per one thousand. We've got an hourly fee, a hundred and fifty dollars an hour upon completion of such work to the city's satisfaction. Then you've got expenses, per-transaction expenses, other expenses. How many expenses do we have for these Rice Advisory? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coe. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward. Seeing none, we will close public comments and move to the Consent and Finance Committee report.
The Finance Committee's looked over all the bills, and everything's in line, and I'd like to call out two donations. One for, from M.C. Flu, one for M.C. Flurod, twenty-five dollars, and also five hundred thousand dollars to go to the community center renovations. That's from District Commissioner Haraway.
Hey, is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second, okay, motion in the second. Any discussion or questions?
Just another public thank you to Commissioner Haraway for his incredibly generous donation. We are very grateful for that, and the community center, I believe, is on track for an August opening, and through support like his helps make it all possible for us.
Thank you. Ready for vote?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is presentation of reports, and we're going to begin with District One.
Yes, ma'am. I just have one item to announce tonight, and that is we have an opening for Place Eight on McDabb, which is the Madison City Disability Advocacy Board. Place Eight is for a person associated with a business that is non-disability services, which I know is kind of confusing. We have two seats, one a business with disability service. This is a seat that is really broad. The person that's had the seat has been on the board since I've been on since 2016 and has had to resign for personal reasons. And he was instrumental with Kids Kingdom. It's going to be a hard seat to fill, but if you work and work for a business that's not associated with disability services, we would love to have you apply. We do have a few applications in the hopper, but definitely want to open it up to anyone who may have a heart to serve the special needs community. And that's all I have.
Thank you. District Three?
New business.
District Four?
I'd like to say thank you, ladies, for bringing this to everybody's attention. If children can see this at any time, at any age, it's gross and disturbing to me. I think that parents should parent, but for kids to be able to walk in and pick this up, I mean, that's horrific. So I don't know what to, who to talk to at the library to talk through that. I'm all for free, free speech. But for children to accidentally pick this up and see this, it's horrific. So I thank you.
District Six?
I will also agree with Greg on that. I'm very uncomfortable looking at it as a parent, as a person, to have a child just pick this up randomly. I can't even imagine what would go through their head, and they would have totally no understanding, but it would be exposed to something. So thank you for bringing that forward to us. Under other business, I just want to congratulate all those that were winners for our volunteerism. It's amazing what so many people come forward and do in this city to make their city great. So I just want to add my thanks to them. To baby pack off of that, we had our first spring cleaning that was done by the Beautification Board. There were eight individuals who showed up, and they cleaned up Madison Boulevard. I wish to thank them for that. The next big event for that will be on April 13th from 9:00 to 11:00 on Balch Road. They'll be going north and south from Columbia Elementary School. Yeah, 9:00 to 11:00 in the morning. So if you've got time, please come out, help the city to look better. I think it's a wonderful way for the community to come together and do volunteerism. Also, I'd like to thank Tracy, who does the Civic Awareness Academy. I was able to go, and they did public safety this last, this last week, and it was amazing to sit and listen to the police and the fire and the traffic. And also, the person from Madison Police and Citizen Advisory Committee was there. And to see the 30 individuals that have put their time and effort into coming and learning more about the city, I think is just so impressive. And I'm just so thankful that they are getting involved. I am grateful that I was able to be a part of the one for safety and the liaison, for anyone that doesn't know that, for both the fire and the, and the police and the committee. So it was an excellent evening, so I just want to congratulate Tracy on putting that together for us. And why I picked the person I did for the Education Board, it's all based on the children. It's what meets the best, where their heart is in the right place for caring for our children, to provide for their safety in the school, to provide good education, to also look at the finances and everything else. It's a very, very broad spectrum that I look at, but I do consider these things very important. So that's to answer your question on that one. And I think the rest of it I'll save for when we come upon it in the agenda. Thank you.
District Seven?
I'll just piggyback on Councilmember Denzine and Councilman Shaw's comment. I have a 15-year-old, and I really want to say this from him and really don't want to say it, you know, for other kids as well. So thank you for bringing it forward. I actually wrote down a question of who, I don't know, but who is our liaison to the library? Because to me, they should probably be handling that. So it's just unacceptable. And there's probably a bunch of other words, but I'd probably turn my mic off, too. That's all I have to say.
Okay. I have one announcement. We had to cancel our work session, in special call session, last week because of inclement weather. And so we have rescheduled that work session for April 17th at 5:30 p.m. That's a Wednesday evening, and that's just a work session only. It's about the Major League Baseball required improvements to Toyota Field and any other enhancements that the council may consider. The vote will not happen until the following Monday at a regularly scheduled City Council meeting. Next, we have Board and Community appointments, and we have one appointment to Board of Education, Place One.
I'd like to now make Tommy Overcash.
Nominations do not require a second. Any other nominations? Seeing none, Tommy Overcash is appointed to Place One, or reappointed to Place One by acclamation. Congratulations, Mr. Overcash. Ms. Denzine, did you say you wanted to say something at this moment?
No, just congratulations. I really appreciate everything that the school board does. I go to several of their meetings, not quite all, but a lot of them. And yeah, I'll just, you really care about the children. You care about what's happening in the school system. You put your heart into it, and I really appreciate that. I appreciate that you came today to support Ms. Lesman and Tessa here, who will be amongst you for the next five years. Thank you for coming. I appreciate that.
I would just like to add my thanks to the 15 people that applied and the five people that we interviewed. I selected Mr. Overcash based on his many years of experience. He has both children and grandchildren in the school system and has poured his heart and soul, blood, sweat, and tears into our city over the many years. We really could not have gone wrong, but we are so thankful to have Mr. Overcash for five more years and appreciate his service that, let me remind everyone, is unpaid, you know? So that's, that's a huge consideration. We get a small monetary payment. They get no payment, and we just so appreciate him investing his time and talent into the next generation. Thank you.
I'll just give my condolences. She stuck with him for another five years, so.
Okay. And with that, congratulations, Mr. Overcash. Thank you to the Board of Education Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent who are in attendance this evening. It's always good to see you. Next, we will move to public hearings, and we have one item, Resolution Number 2024-102-R.
Good evening. The Revenue Department has one item scheduled for a public hearing this evening. It is Resolution Number 2024-102-R, which is a request from Shaw Inc. doing business as Banana Leaf for a non-premises beer and wine license. The license is for the restaurant located at the Best Western Hotel on 9035 Madison Boulevard. And the reason that this business is applying for a non-premises beer and wine license at this time is because it is a new business in the city of Madison, and everything is in order for this item to be considered.
Is the business owner here this evening?
No, they're not in attendance.
Okay. We will open public hearings. Each person who wants to speak at public hearings has five minutes. They state your name and district. Seeing none, we will close public hearings, and I'll entertain a motion to...
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion, Ms. Shaw, second. By Seifert. Any discussion, any questions? All right, ready for votes?
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears. Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye. And the motion passes. Thank you, Vaughn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Change facilities and grounds.
Facilities, grounds, purpose, one item for your consideration, Resolution 2024-095-R, authorizing professional service agreement with tighter properties for marketing services for the sale of 4182 Sullivan Street property. Move to approve.
Motion, second. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions. On this, are we still investigating on how we're going to list this? This is not listing a property yet, correct? We're still working with them?
That is correct. All this does is just, is just the agreement. We engage them, and then we'll sit down with the real estate agent and work on the strategy as far as how to market it, because there's a few ways to skin the cat, I guess, a good way to put it.
We'll talk through, or like, what will be the end resolution? Will we all just move forward, or will we see this again? Or what does that look like?
What I foresee happening is I will probably sit down with the real estate agent, with Gerald, after the agreement is put through, and then we'll sit down across the table and figure out what we need to do in order to market that property, whether that's going to involve demolition, selling it as is, anything that we can do in advance to help the property move. But we'll have all that discussion. And we have not scheduled anything, but the first process was just simply getting an engagement letter with them approved by the council.
I was thinking we had a proposed buyer for this property a couple of months ago. Am I wrong on thinking that, that Mary Beth thought that...
There was somebody interested. I believe that we also had an appraisal done, and I think that it was conveyed that they were not interested in purchasing property at the level of the appraisal.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. So before we would actually sell the property, then we would have the information with the appraisal to see what your...
We already have, have the appraisal, and I understand it was actually appraised for a residential property. However, as you know, this is not, something will, either the purchaser will have to demolish it to bring it into a current residential, or we would demolish it. But our intent is to sell it as is right now. So I say I would like to say that we have had an appraisal on the property, and once we can sit down with the real estate agent, then I think we'll be able to convey more information to you as far as how it's going to be marketed.
They will come back to us before officially being sold. Somebody's got to approve that contract and that agreement.
Yes. Whatever the terms of the agreement as far as how we, well, this just engages the real estate agent as far as, you know, the terms of whatever the amount offered, et cetera. All that would, of course, have to come to council to be...
I think that's what you were asking. Really?
If we rezoned this to commercial now, could we not ask more for it? Or would it appraise differently if we rezoned it?
Yeah.
It'd appraise for $355,000.
As a residential property?
As it sets today.
But it's zoned residential?
It is currently zoned residential.
So if we rezoned it commercial, would we not, would it not appraise differently?
We have to go back to the appraiser and ask that question. We didn't have him to appraise it as commercial because the interest, the party in it was interested in residential.
If we rezone it, that will limit the potential buyer. Somebody may want to buy it and put a home on it. If we rezone it commercial, they wouldn't be able to do that. So maybe engaging with this real, this firm will tell us what's the best zoning for that property. And if they say commercial, that would be great.
And counsel, I'd also interject that Dustin Taylor, actually, he specializes in commercial properties, and he's handling this as residential. So he could go either way. So that's, that's why we selected him for this.
I think they have that option to change the zoning.
That's a question.
Yeah. No? Great question.
Okay. Ready for vote?
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye. And the motion passes. Thank you, Gerald.
Thank you.
Fire.
My counsel asked, the president of the, let me get this right, Huntsville Hospital Health System Emergency Medical Services, John Howde, to stand up with me today. So I just wanted to really express my appreciation for the partnership that we've had for them for many years, many years before I even got here with HEMZ and the partnership for our EMS system, where, you know, we provide paramedics on scene pretty quick. They get here quick, and they provide the transport as appropriate to all of our hospitals. And we work together, all of our paramedics work together on scene. So the one that was in the consent agenda was about accepting an ambulance. And again, you've already passed that into the consent agenda. But I just want to make sure everybody understands. They have provided the ambulance that we have out, out back of our Station One. We put our wrap on it. But they provided that for the last two years at $1 a year lease. So now they're, they're giving it to us. They're giving us that ambulance. So any critical patients that we need to get to quickly, if they are so busy that they can't get there quick enough, which is the purpose of that, we get to them quickly and we transport them. And it has saved lives already in the last two years. So can't, I can't describe how appreciative I am of, of the partnership. That's one example. But I'm here to ask for your consideration of Resolution 2024-80-R, authorizing an MOU with the Huntsville Hospital Health System EMS services for EMS and paramedic services. This is reauthorizing the same one we had three years ago, and it will go, putting their name on it, the new name. And it will, what it does is it allows us legally to provide protection for his folks and our folks when we have to get in the back of their ambulance. Sometimes they get on scene, and they've got a BLS unit, as an example, and with just EMTs on it. And it's the right level of, in their system, but it's an ALS patient. We get there, we've started ALS services that the paramedics have provided, giving advanced drugs, that type of thing. We need to be able to maintain that all the way to the hospital. So this allows for that process to go as it needs to go for that patient, for our citizens. So again, I'm looking at the future just as excited as I did the past with Huntsville Hospital system now. So that's what I'm asking for. Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion, my Robleski, second. By Denzine. Any questions or comments?
Thank you for the wonderful partnership, and thank you for the ambulance. That saves a lot of lives.
Yeah. Just thought of that. I mean, I don't, I don't remember the exact number, but at last month's board meeting, I think, we, for the month of February, I think, set almost a record. I think we were less than one visit shy of the record.
It wasn't a new record. It was a...
It was, okay.
177 transports a day.
Yeah.
150 response.
Yeah. And I think on average, was it 160 some odd a day, roughly?
177.
Right. But I think on average, though...
Yeah. Our, our budget is 162, I think.
Right. So we've been saying over the past, like, past few years, numbers have gone through the roof. So having this ability or this capability within the city to help augment, and then also having the agreement is, is life-saving. Pun intended.
Okay. You ready for a vote?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Legal.
Good evening. I have Resolution Number 2024-101-R, amending Resolution Number 2023-374-R to confirm that payments for professional architect services associated with the design management of construction of the Public Safety Annex continues to be allocated from the ARPA funds. All this is, is a cleanup resolution. When we first authorized and allocated the ARPA funds, we got the $5 million. We said this is going to be allocated to the design and the construction of a new police station, et cetera. We went through several different phases where we then went through the bid. We made a very clear net resolution. This is coming from ARPA money. But in our contract with the architect, it didn't have that magic clause that this is going to ARPA. I think that we designated it clearly in the first one, but when the auditors took a look at this, they just wanted us to amend that. And when it deals, you know, when you're dealing with the federal government, these ARPA funds, you just can't be too careful. So that's all it is, just a cleanup.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have a motion, second?
Move to approve.
Aye.
Any questions?
I do have a question. What is the dollar value amount of the funds that'll be going to?
Um, I'm, I'm sorry, as far as, I know that we had five million that we originally asked for, uh, we sent, you know, a little over four million, and I think that we have nine hundred thousand remaining available, and I think that we may have paid as much as maybe sixty thousand so far on the design pursuant to that contract with architects. I don't have the exact figures for you, uh, I wish I did, but I, I think that's ballpark where we're at.
So we're authorizing basically to pay that sixty thousand from that money? Is that what you're telling me, or is it more than that?
Well, we, we had already authorized through the very original, uh, resolution that this was going to, this ARPA money was going to go toward not just the construction, but also the design, but in the resolution in which we actually awarded the contract to the architect, we did not have language in there that said, "ARPA's, this is going to go from ARPA money." So we're doing this just simply to reiterate and make it as clear as we possibly can that this is being traced to those ARPA funds.
So it doesn't obligate additional funds?
No, absolutely not, just clears up language. Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Okay, ready for vote?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Brian. Please.
Good evening. Uh, first resolution is twenty twenty-four zero six five R, authorizing a change order to an agreement with Motorola Solutions to include yearly training on a Flex Record, uh, management system. This is a huge records management system that was purchased before I got here, and we were stuck with it. Um, we're still finding our way around this system. Um, we found out in the original contract, we actually had, uh, an authorization in there for them to provide training for us every year because the system constantly, uh, changes, they add new systems to it, and, uh, we need to keep up with those, those, uh, different technology changes they put into it. So this agreement is allowing, uh, member of, of I.T. and police to be able to attend training to keep up with those upgrades.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second, any questions? Ready for vote?
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears. Councilmember Denzine. Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Uh, the second resolution, uh, twenty twenty-four zero nine six R, and this is authorizing a renewal with an agreement with Import Record for towing services. They have been, uh, um, fantastic in working any kind of changes we need to make at, at the last minute. Uh, anything we ask them to do, they're willing to, to do so without any hesitation, without any pushback, so, uh, we're renewing our contract with them.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second, any questions? Ready for vote?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears. Councilmember Denzine. Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Motion passes.
The final resolution, twenty twenty-four zero nine nine R, and this is authorizing a lease of sixty Panasonic Toughbooks. Um, these Toughbooks are actually the mobile data computers that are in the police cars. We originally purchased Rhino Tabs that looked like they were going to work with our systems, and, uh, once we got them out into the field, we found out that the Rhino Tabs wouldn't fully upload the Flex system that I was just talking about. We do what's known as mobile field reporting, which means we take the computers with us into the home when we make police reports and things like that, and we couldn't pull up the full page of Flex, so we weren't able to complete those, uh, reports. The officers had to come back to the station in order to do their reports, and it defeats the entire purpose of mobile field reporting. So, uh, we looked at what would work, and we looked at, uh, several systems, and became the Panasonic Toughbooks were the ones that were the overwhelming favorites of the officers. Uh, three hundred and forty-two thousand is what we already have in our budget for small equipment and, uh, technology, and what we're going to do is, uh, we want to lease these because we know the lifespan on the technology is about three years. We had an option to buy these at five years, but we would be stuck at the end of five years with obsolete computers, so we decided the lease option where we can continue to, to update the technology through the lease.
Move to approve.
Second.
Um, I do have one question, chief. Were we able to sell the ones that you first bought? I think you, did you call them REAM, maybe?
Rhino Tabs is what they're called.
Okay, were you able to sell those or get them back?
Dave, are they working for you guys?
Okay.
Okay.
Fire's looking to see if it could be used for, for their usage. In fact, it seems a lot more compatible with what they use.
Okay, very good.
What we have.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Not all is lost.
Okay, ready for vote?
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.